I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Farver's School Committee for Monday, September 12th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Harp?
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Ferraro?
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Here. Now, we'll salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn that off. Not allow my kids to play.
We have no citizen in court at this time. The purpose of the meeting is goal-setting with Superintendent Maria Ponce, so I will therefore turn it over to our superintendent, Ms. Ponce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So what you have before you, you have a draft, and I want to say draft because the purpose of this committee is, if this meeting is to share the draft and to get feedback from you, and then go back and refine those goals and, you know, hopefully present the second read, and they get adopted in October. One thing that I have learned from other superintendences actually, because if you notice the first goal, we don't have our data yet, and I was asking some superintendents about that, and they were saying that they usually do their goal-setting in October because the data usually comes in at the end of September or early October so that we can actually have some concrete numbers. Certainly, you know, we will, by the time we meet again, we will, I will share the numbers with you and add those numbers in there for you, but at this time for the student learning goal, and that we don't have the targets yet set by the state. So, you know, that goal isn't complete, right? That we're waiting for. We have some data, but not, it's embargoed and not the data that we need for to calculate the goals. If you notice that the format is a little bit different simply because last year's goals were, I got some feedback from the committee. Some of those goals really belonged in departments, and we needed to take the overarching piece of those goals and include it into my goals, and that's what I tried to do. This format mimics our teachers and administrators. Everybody has to submit a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and some district improvement goals, and in this case, we have four district improvement goals. So I try to model what we're, what we want to see and what we do for our staff. So I'm going to, if everybody is certainly, we don't have concrete numbers, but if people have any questions on the student learning goals, certainly can take some feedback from that, or we can skip over to the professional practice goal.
When is the, when you can?
Towards, we have been getting some data. We will be getting, the goal is that by the end of the month, we'll have data. Usually, the data comes out the end of September, early October. The, I will say the target, accountability targets won't come out until later on, but based on like our attendance data, chronic absenteeism, we'll get those numbers at the end of the month, and we'll be able to set goals, you know, that are related to that data.
Anything further on the student learning goals, Mr. Aguirre?
The, when you look at the timings that you just explained, so where it says during the 2022-23 school year, with the staff, usually, I believe we used to use like by June of 2022, whatever, so I'd like to see a date, more of a solid date in there so that we can now know, and it'll help us to know when we're going to meet. So this might be from October or November to November, because it doesn't make sense to do it.
Yep.
Why you just articulated it, but when I looked at the goals in the past as well as now, I want to see, let's say it's November of next year, how did we do with the goals? Did we meet them or not? And the cleaner we make this, the easier it's going to be to determine that, and I think sometimes, even when I was working in the school system as an administrator, that was very difficult if we weren't clear on the front end. So for me, I would want to see.
That actually makes a lot of sense because the superintendent's evaluation cycle is November to November, so it probably makes sense to do it October to October, to have the data so that when the evaluation happens for November, that you have everything and then we can do exactly what you're just saying.
If you have other info that says it's not, but move it accordingly, but.
So by October, yep.
Along that same line, the schools, when the schools come in, I'll speak for myself, sometimes I'm a little confused with their goals as well, so then when we're trying to keep it in the same format, and I think I mentioned this at the last time, so that you would hold them accountable with the attendance we had talked about last time.
Right, right.
So you can't make a goal personally that says your attendance is going to do X, Y, and Z.
Right.
If you don't hold them accountable to their piece.
Yep.
So how that integrates to this, like, so next time we meet on this, maybe if we could articulate each school's goals in another page of this or something, it'll help us to figure out. So I'd have to have my research to go back and say, well, all of the schools are going to improve by 10% on this or that. And then if you give us this without that info, now I'm like, well, you say 5%, but they might say 10%. One school might say greater percent, you know, just trying to.
Right.
Put them all together.
All schools have to have like a, their, their goals are, you know, related to my goals, right? To district goals and district improvement plan, and they all have to have. And it, one of the things that we got back from last time is that attendance needed to be called out by itself because it's such an issue in our district, and every school, that's one of the things that we did, every school in their school improvement plan has to have an attendance goal.
Absolutely.
So that's a good thing. We could actually do a one-page of for each school in regards to what their SIP goals are so that we can bring it to you so that you can see how it aligns.
Yeah, and if you look at the, I think I was reading through the evaluations in another section, right?
Yep.
The, but to get back to this part, when the schools, I don't necessarily think are uniform in what they have to, what you or prior superintendents have mandated, so they're all over the place as well. So I would say in the meantime, they should all somewhat look similar so that everybody wants to be whatever X amount proficient or something. If we've got a very lower performing school, then their goal might be just to make 10%, but 10% isn't fair to his school because his school's already thriving.
Right.
How does it all get relative, you know, at the end of the day? So that's all I have on that.
Okay.
Anything further on student learning goals?
Can I ask one more?
Of course.
So when we were talking about the data for the state, sometimes we rely, I think, on too much of the state data, and we spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on things that we paid for so that schools could assess their children on a regular basis. I'll speak again for myself. I don't necessarily see the results of that throughout the year in any fashion at all, except for when we push it like at a subcommittee meeting.
Right, right.
But on a regular, bi-monthly basis or something to say, where are all the schools at when they're doing their assessments? So it shouldn't be a surprise at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So I know you're looking at that info, but somehow if we could weave in.
Regular.
Regular updates on our own assessments.
Yep.
That we could say, well, the kids are making progress or not.
And they're using the school-based data to create their goals because principals can't use MCAS data for their goals, like, not the principals, but the staff, because MCAS data doesn't come in until after, so they have to use benchmark data, you know, based on some of the curriculum that we have, the platforms that we've, we've invested in, so certainly, yep, and we should have regular data updates.
Is that something we could do? Well, I mean, maybe regular, but maybe once in the middle of the school year and then at the end of the school year?
Well, I mean.
I don't know, like, regular updates, but yeah, maybe like quarterly or, or half year.
Yep, and we're going to have instructional subcommittee meetings quarterly, right?
Right.
So that could be one of the pieces for instructional subcommittee.
Sounds good.
So when we, I can't say that every single quarter we'll have data points for every single piece, but whatever data points we have, we report out on that data. Does that make sense?
Can we just get access to last year's goals for them? Because I know, like, for Bobby and I, we wouldn't, like, we don't have access. We don't know what their goals were last year to be able to compare.
To the schools?
Schools, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, we don't have that.
History, history.
Yeah.
When you, when you mention the, whether it's quarterly or whatever, I think that it should be some regular pattern, however that fits, but I think there's a disconnect between all of the resources that we're putting in and what does difference in that, what is that making along the way?
The impact.
The impact that that's happening, who cares about what the MCAS scores are or this is, we should be seeing growth in the kids.
Right.
And if we're not, or we see your school is really good growth, yours is moderate, yours is really low, then we're going to hold you accountable to say, what are you doing to make his school follow? I think we miss that goal too sometimes in here.
Mm-hmm.
So we have pockets of, that person's doing great with this, but why the hell isn't it being done in all schools? But we don't see the data that, that goes with that, so that's.
For why something might not be able to be implemented in the same way, or are they just missing the boat on something?
Or it depends on the school, but I will say that one of the things that we are creating or re-establishing, we've had that in the past, and then kind of it went by the wayside for many different reasons, so we are creating data cycles with each school. Right now, everybody's getting their MCAS data, myself, Dr. Curly, our office of instruction team, we're going to go out to schools, do a data dive with the principals and their instructional team to do a baseline, you know, let's look at the data, what are our goals as a result of that data, and we're going to do, we are tiering our schools, high need schools, the moderate schools, you know, and, and meeting with them regularly to do exactly that. Okay, so what are your short-term goals? How does the data, you know, okay, we just have beta, data from this benchmark, how does that relate to the goal that you set? Do we need to make any adjustments? So we weren't in that cycle, and we're going back to that cycle of monitoring and supporting schools. It's really about putting supports in school as well as putting accountability measures and what gets monitored gets done, and we do need to do, we need to model that as a district team so that our schools do it and it trickles down.
Okay. How about the professional practice goals at this time?
So obviously, I have a responsibility to model best practices and, and being a reflective practitioner for all staff. I need to continue to grow and build my own capacity. Last year, as being a new superintendent, I was part of the new superintendent's network. I will be part of that year two. That comes with coaching and mentoring. I also will be participating year two in the Lynch leadership and, you know, doing monthly learning walks at buildings, giving principals feedback. Everything we expect our principals and our building leaders to do, we're going to be doing as a district team, and I'm going to, to be growing as a, you know, as a leader so that I can model for our principals and our leaders what we expect. And now we have our district improvement goals, so Mr. Aguirre just alluded to that, supervision evaluation. If you notice, so certainly, our district has grown. We have added departments. We are trying to put good systems in place, systems of support, systems of accountability, so we do a pretty good job with evaluating administrators and teachers, but we have to do a good job at evaluating everybody, right, and supporting everybody. People, if I don't evaluate you or give you feedback, you don't know, you think you're doing a great job because you haven't heard otherwise. So our goal is to have all staff evaluated regardless of which department they work in. We need to have a system, we need to create goals, and we need to give people regular feedback. So that's one of the district improvement plans, the improvement goals, is to make sure that we have systems, systems of support and accountability through evaluation and supervision. The other one is equitable access. The school year, if you notice, I didn't call out a specific, last year, we had a specific goal for special needs, a specific goal for multilingual learners, et cetera, so if we are providing, if we are a district that supports all students and gives all students access, we need to make sure that we do that by creating the sense of belonging, by building relationships, providing the appropriate scaffolds for students, and expanding what we have already in place. So we're going to expand our programs, like dual language, we're going to roll over, we rolled over to first grade, next year to third grade, we're going to continue that model. We're going to continue to support all students who, you know, where they are, right? So I think that we're pretty good about intervening to the kids that are at the bottom, and then we forget to accelerate the kids at, at the top. We need to make sure that we meet kids where they are and put systems in place that support all students, provide every single person access and scaffolds. Scaffolds happen for the students who are struggling as well as the students who are excelling, and we need to make sure that we have those system, tiered systems of support in place. Having a multi-tiered system of support was one of our goals last year that really didn't get off the ground the way it needed to.
Yep.
So we need to make sure that we have that system in place so that we're making sure that we support all learners, right? So, you know, what happens in tier one, what happens in tier two, what happens in tier three, but we need to have a district model, and that needs to funnel down to all the schools. Does anyone have any questions?
I had a question on the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The professional practice goal on collaborative planning facilitation of monthly principal meetings.
Yep.
Can we get copies of the agenda for those meetings?
For the principals' meetings?
Just never seen one of those before, and over the years, sometimes I wonder, like, what is being discussed at, at those meetings? It'll just help us to know what that.
Sure.
What that really is.
And some, sometimes those are, we, principals' meetings, our focus is to try to make them meetings where we build capacity, right? Obviously, in the beginning of the year, we're going to have some safety training at the beginning of the school year, but sometimes there's some nuts and bolts, and a lot of times, it's about looking at data, you know, what are we doing? Sharing data with our, with our principals and talking about plans for moving forward, but yeah, we can, we can certainly share that.
The, and one of the reasons why I ask that is because sometimes we have meeting, we, meaning anybody, or any school system, you have meetings that could be done by email, like it's check the box like this, that, you know, but we'll, those meetings, in my opinion, ask for higher level instructional, what are we doing? And we can morph into the, you know, oh, by the way, don't forget, this is due then, this is due then, but more action-oriented, this is what we're going to be doing. That's why I was asking for that. And then you put examples of monthly feedback to principals as, as measured by, which is a good, which is a good thing, but in the past, what we used to get was random, for no reason whatsoever, things sent to us. So in my mind, if we're going to use as measuring by professional practice goals and all that and walkthroughs and feedback, then I think all of those should be sent to, to us. If we're going to use that as a measure in your, whether you're making this goal or not, to me, don't just send me one or two, and it's like, well, random, well, why do we get this in the mail? Like, what is this about? If this is what we're going to measure it by, then I think we need to see all of them.
Well, that would be part of my collection of evidence. I mean, just like, we wouldn't expect a teacher, they have to, you know, because you evaluate teachers, right? They're not going to submit every single thing they do, but they give you a sampling of the things that they do, so certainly in my collection of evidence, I would have samplings of feedback, so I might have a formative evaluation, a summative, some unannounced or whatever, but I wouldn't include every single one, two, in my binder because it would be a very, very thick binder, but certainly, I think that.
But you'd also, I think you'd agree that we shouldn't just get a selected one.
Right, oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean?
And it needs to be.
Doesn't make sense to.
Right, yes.
Consistent.
Yes.
We don't get the names.
No, we would have to redact that.
Redact.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need names.
We got the names in the past, absolutely.
Why do we need the names? I don't think we need, I don't think we need the names.
What do you mean? We have, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a debate, it's a fact.
But why do we need the names?
Superintendent sends us, go, when I went to Henry Lord School, I got a, here's my feedback for the Henry Lord School. We got it in email, 100%.
Who sent you that?
The superintendent.
Malone?
The prior superintendent.
Prior superintendent.
So then, when you look at it, I think it's very valuable, and why would we not? Plus, we should get it because why would we not get something to say, this is your analysis as, who we actually are the ones that can hold you accountable, this is your analysis of those schools. If there's nothing to hide, then why are we, why would we not get it with a name on it? That's another thing I think we've got to get rid of around here, is that everybody's so worried about, oh, well, we can't just say, no, it is what it is. We're all professionals. If you're going to go and do it, you send us something, we should be able to see it. Why would we not see it? What, are we afraid to say, well, I went to such and such school, and there was, this happened, this is the feedback I gave? If that's the case, then take it out of the goals.
So my gut feeling is we're probably talking about different things, so I don't, Kevin, I'm not hearing that as like a staff name, I'm hearing it just like a general collective, I noticed this when I walked into Henry Lord, those, the safety measures were in place.
He's asking for actual feedback, though.
He wants Coogan.
Okay. If I evaluated Mimi, then what?
I'm not looking for any evaluation.
You're talking about an announced or whatever.
But when you go around, so just.
But not individual people.
I want to just speak candidly, totally 100% candid. This is what we used to get from the old superintendent. He went around, he'd grab a couple of school committee members, he'd go around to a school, it would be a dog and pony show, it'll be, well, wonderful, this, all of this other stuff, like as if everything's hunky-dory 100%, and then we all of a sudden get this feedback that says, here's what my walkthrough was when you're walking around with school committee members. I'll speak for myself, nobody should be walking around with school committee members doing any evaluation such as this.
That's not what it was for.
There was never evaluations.
That's, no, Kevin, that was for his program, I know what that was for. That was for his program that he was in that required him to do so many walkthroughs. So what the former superintendent would do was take his materials from that and wrap it into his class, but as far as what he was doing for that school specifically to say, Principal Aguirre left out the third grade from the data, but whatever, whatever concrete things, he was giving you just what you said, fluff, that was not concrete, it was for his class.
Right, well, I don't care if she takes a class or she doesn't take a class, and keep the fluff out as far as I'm concerned.
And that's what he got, though.
So what he used to send to us was when we go walkthrough with, and I have, I support it, you want to go through, let's go walkthrough a school, see what's going on great. I work every day, I can't do that, so I don't think it should be done as much as it was done in the past with Dr. Malone. But with that being said, you have a duty to do instructionally to go through.
That's right.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the real work, not the fluff stuff.
Yeah.
So.
But that's what he sent you, fluff.
Well, it was over and over, yeah. This happened, that happened, we gave high fives to kids, took pictures with this one, we did that.
It wasn't.
That's not, this is more instructional, like.
Practices, yeah.
What you really are doing, and how do we know you're giving quality feedback to a school? Like, that's all, I'm not, not looking to, I don't evaluate somebody.
So you're asking to see some samples of feedback.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think that's pretty fair. The second one, you said district improvement goals, all staff 100%.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us what it is now, what the baseline is now, based on that goal?
I, I think in some departments, so teachers and administrators are in the 90s, and certainly if it's, somebody's out, goes out on a FMLA or whatever, they might have gotten left out for the most part. That's why we would have someone not being evaluated, but I think other, other departments, we don't have consistent evaluation systems in place.
Can you get the data?
I can get that data. I can try to get, I don't know if that data was collected.
Teacher admin, though, was in the high 90s, I think.
Yes, yes.
You told me this somewhere, so that was, and again, it was the same thing, Kevin's out 12 weeks for a child or whatever.
Right.
They don't have those, but they nailed everybody that was in the building.
Yes, so, but what he's asking, what I'm saying.
Is overall, he wants overall.
Is overall, what I was saying was, we want, system-wide, we want to put systems of support and accountability. We've expanded, we've created departments, we, so we need to have, and we've, it, part of our negotiations has been to create labor management teams where they're looking at the tools and refining them and making them more targeted for specific groups, so moving forward, we need to make sure that we put those to practice and make sure that everybody gets evaluated.
So everybody has an assigned evaluator, whether you're an adjustment counselor, an attendance officer, a security guard?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. That's, that's what our goal is.
So it says here, in order to ensure effective and timely supervision of all staff, 100% of staff will be evaluated in accordance with the state regulations.
Absolutely.
What I'm asking is the questions on, like we did with the staff member, do your self-assessment of where you're at and the people before you. So this is not to, you know, criticize anybody or anything, but that's a basic expectation.
Right.
That if anybody thinks that that shouldn't be a basic expectation, they, they're in the wrong profession. Sadly, sadly, that number is not 100, not even close to 90%. When we get those data, we get it from the ones that are in the union, either, either unions or whatever, we're not getting it across the board 100%, so I agree with what your system that you're trying to put in place, but in order to fix the system, we have to acknowledge what's wrong with the current system, and there is deficiencies across the board with people that are in powerful positions, that are in leadership positions, that have not evaluated staff that are under them. It's hard to believe, but it's a fact. So that's why I'm asking for the data, is that we've got to say, this is what it is. If Mr. Bailey's looking at it, and I only evaluated 10 of, 10% of my staff, and I'm a manager, I'm a leader in a department, well, Mr. Bailey's got a right to come after me and say, what are you doing? How are you only evaluating this? There should be nobody that's, in this district, not one person that says, I haven't been evaluated in years. That should not come in anybody's, out of anybody's mouth, and if we're being honest, we know it, that's the case. Many people haven't been evaluated for years. I asked at a meeting two months ago to get a data on a certain department to say how many people were evaluated or not. To this day, I still don't have that information, and I know why I don't have it, because the people that are in those departments, that are running those departments, didn't take it as a priority to say, this is what I need to do. But as you've mentioned before, Mrs. Ponce, when you measure it, they will address it. So if somebody was asking them, you tell me a checklist of all the people in your department that by contract was supposed to be evaluated once or every year, every second year. If you don't ask that person for the data, they're going to go year after year after year, and we just keep dealing with the same old. So I'm not trying to criticize anybody, but I think that's where drilling down a good, a good goal is, and you've got to find the baseline. Are you?
Do we have, it says all evaluators will participate in the PD. Do we have a set PD for them to do evaluation process?
So for, yes, we do, it depends on the department. We're setting up for other departments that haven't had professional development, but we're doing training for all people who evaluate.
And that, and the evaluation tool for teachers is set by the state?
Yeah, yeah.
For administrators is set by the state?
Yes.
But the ancillary groups around the edges, are those in-house evaluations, or do they break down every, every department? I mean, do we have, like, security guards, just for example? Do they have an in-district or is it something by the state?
They have in-district. We actually had one tool that was a catch-all for everybody, and as we're meeting with each group, we're personalizing that tool for that department.
To fit that job.
Yes.
Anything further on the district improvement goals? Keep going.
So the student attendance goal, as we know, you know, student attendance, we just got ourselves back into, hopefully, a routine, right? Last year, we came back in person, attendance still suffered greatly due to COVID, in, out. We told kids to stay home if they weren't feeling well, et cetera, so we need to get ourselves back on track. So one of the things we were supposed to do last year was to reestablish the attendance task force, which, that didn't get done, so we're prioritizing that. We are doing some root cause analysis with our staffs, with our school, as well as every school has set up a student support team to track and monitor student attendance, to create some personalized goals for kids. Obviously, we need to work with our attendance officers, that's, we have a tiered support also there, they, they're doing mostly tier three, and then school, they're doing tier one and two. We certainly have community facilitators that we brought on board that are doing some work with connecting families and creating opportunities for families to engage with us in instilling the importance of kids being in school. So it is a priority, it is a priority for us as a district, it is a priority for us as individual schools. We know that if kids aren't in school, they're missing out on something, so we need to first[1688.32] So, we need to first get them in so that we can get them, start closing those gaps.
Ms. Rogers?
So, the key actions, reestablish the attendance task force. I know that this was a sort of contentious issue under the prior superintendent, in that it was good privacy was being made, and then all of a sudden it just stopped, COVID excuses, whatever the excuses are, I personally don't care. But this, from what I can remember, the attendance task force was doing a lot of good things, and they were doing well, then all of a sudden it just stopped. But we're already in October, September.
September.
So-
We already, Cindy already has, we're creating a meeting, we're targeting, we have to be very specific as to who's going to be part of that task force and setting up the first meeting, so that's going to get set up immediately.
Yeah, my point is saying is that sometimes when you reestablish something, it's like, we've got to reinvent the wheel, we've got to go through all the-
No.
I thought that the people that were on it were doing well, and I think they had some good ideas, they just need to be, decisions need to be made and they need to be implemented. But when I just, I would just caution that, it needs to just be up and running again, not necessarily, let's just start over.
Right, right.
We have people that work for us that are good people and know what we need to do, so I would do that. The other piece of it, when I look at the schools, it says all schools monitor, when attendance offices in the job organization, the OCHOTs, I think they work for the district, under the district, but not the schools.
Right.
And I would argue the point that the fact that we have enough of them now, that they probably have two schools or whatever-
Right, right.
I think they should work for the principal, in my personal opinion, so that the principal of the school knows, I have, you know, these two of my attendance offices, Mr. Bailey's my attendance officer, he's with me every Tuesday, Thursday, I got him all day, we're going to be, this stuff here of meeting, we're going to be on the plan, we're going to have these other meetings. If they're not working for the principal, it makes it just another layer. So, my personal advice, for what it's worth, would be to have the principals look at that a little greater. And if you felt that, under those circumstances, that they're working tremendously hard, we've got these issues, whatever, we need another one, or we need another two, I'd more than support that if it was proven that they were doing the work. You know what I mean?
Right, right.
Right now, we just add stuff sometimes, without, but if you did that under the principals and you did an organization, and you said, if we had one more, I can streamline this a little better, so everybody has at least two days a week in attendance offices, you know, in their buildings, under their control, I would support adding one personally, because attendance is, if they're not here, they're not going to learn, so. With that, I owe, thank you.
And then the last goal, we did feel like, I felt like we did need to call out human capital goal by itself, because we continue to struggle. Obviously, there, we know there's a national teacher shortage, and we're not unique in this, but we certainly need to do more to attract quality people to our district, to retain our staff. So, that goal is a standalone goal that is targeting, we need to, I just think that we need to partner with our universities around us and really create some opportunities to bring people in, whether we bring them in as student teachers and create a pipeline there, or interns, which we've had some success with, continue to grow the JEP program. We just need to, that attention needs to be in building human capacity so that we can, we're not, and we want, our goal is to be staffed at 98% when we open next year. We always know that there's reasons why, you know, people, we may not have a person, but we want to get back to as close to 100% staffed as possible, and in order for that to happen, there's some work that needs to be done by us as a district to recruit and retain our staff.
I do think you said the right thing. Everybody I talk to is under the gun on staff right now. I was reading an article in the paper that they bought in Maine, can't get any special education teachers, they're thinking of going four days a week for fed kids to try to be able to rotate them through, it's that, it's that dire up there, so they're working hard too. Mr. Aguirre?
So, along the lines of the self-assessment that I talked about for the teachers and staff that we do, I'd like to see some of the self-assessment of human capital goal, because I've been on this committee back now for four or five years, and I've seen these same, some of these same things over and over, and really, nothing happened with it. So, I'm just curious to see when we do a, like a baseline, where we've been, what we have and haven't done, and before we get this finalized. Obviously, it's an issue when you, you know, we can't fill positions, but there's also things that we can advocate for. May I just talk about special education, like, to me, it still defies logic why you can get an emergency license as a, to be a teacher, but you can't get an emergency license to be a special ed teacher, even though you're a certified teacher?
Right.
Like, what the hell is that? Like, that doesn't make any sense. So, those are the types of things that, to the departments, from HR through you, to your organization, should be going to the legislature, saying, this is what we need. That just blows my mind about the special education piece of that, but-
So, an advocacy piece in here?
Yeah, or something like, so when we, instead of just saying, oh, we have this issue, oh, we have this issue, oh, we have this issue, well, what is it? Like, one of the things I think that the state said you can bring back teachers, that we're retired and the cap is gone, and that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but that's done from the state, but how did that get to the state? Somebody had to advocate through the units, through you. So, I'm not criticizing the stuff that you have in here, I know you've got recruitments in here, things like that.
Right.
How many recruitments have we done over the last four or five years? That's what a self-assessment I would ask for from a teacher, what have you done?
Right, right.
So, look at it and see where we're at.
Okay.
Are there any, is there anything that needs to be on here that I didn't include in the goals, or any other goals that need to be added, or?
I don't like the old one because it was so extensive, it was too much, it was too much. This is clean.
Nice to hear what this means. Quarterly principal survey data shows that 85% of principals agree with indicators of success. What is that exactly?
That's part of their Lynch leadership. They have to survey principals and to see where they were at and where they were going, and they, I mean, it's been very well received, and they have to put into practice what they learned in Lynch leadership, so that's a result. I can get you that, I can get the committee that piece, but what that survey?
It's not really clear, right?
Okay, yep, all right, so we'll clarify that.
I'm trying to have a hard time figuring out what, what do you mean, do you agree or agree with indicators of success? Like, what the heck does that mean? Because to me, you could have a principal that doesn't agree with what you want to do.
It's what they identified as the indicators of success, as a collective group who's part of the survey, so we can get, we can share that survey.
I mean, you have it here, so later on, we look to see, well, what do we measure? So, if it's just something that's, I said fluff before, but I'm not, like, the same thing, what does it matter? Then just take it out, would we, or if you want it in, then tell us what it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything further for the goal setting meeting?
I just had a comment.
Ms. Rogers?
So, my comment was just that I appreciated that you talked about creating a sense of belonging among all program areas, because in the past, what we've done is we've talked about, in special education, we're only going to identify these issues here, and in our MLL students, we're only going to work on these issues here, instead of looking at it as this is an entire district, not just a special ed piece and an MLL piece, like, they're all of our kids and they all belong in there. So, I just appreciate that you created that across the board, as opposed to just these individual siloed, these siloed pieces.
Good point. Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Under the goals, pre-K goal?
Yes.
Increase by five classrooms?
Minimum of five.
So, what I would just ask, and I know I think I've asked for this before, when we were talking about the buildings, we need solid data on what we have, what we don't have, and what we need by regulation versus like a want versus a must-have, things like that, but I think that five is a little low.
Well, because we're looking at, last time I didn't have, because I said it was because of staffing, right? We know that we increased by five last year, that was the number, and those numbers fluctuate, right? Because it's as kids qualify for services, after they're three years old, they can qualify for services, so that's a rolling number. I, maybe I need to put a minimum of, we just, obviously, we're putting a comprehensive plan together in regards to how we're going to expand. I don't want to say 10, and then we don't have space for 10, right? Because that absolutely has, has to do with spacing, but I think that-
I would simply add that to, so, an increase of a minimum of five classrooms, and then continue the sentence to say, in conjunction with the larger plan that we're creating or something, it just shows, so, I just, like I said again, if we're not clear on what it is, so, you could increase by five if we just left this and say, oh, that's great, well, you had the opportunity maybe to do 20, but you only did five, or I still got to say you did, that's all, just maybe clarify that there's a bigger piece to it. I owe, thank you.
One thing, too, I just want to pivot back to the attendance, maybe it would fit under attendance, but I know we've had conversations in the past about having better attendance at school participation in community events.
Yes.
Especially such as the kickoff to summer. So, I don't know if we can discuss if that can be a goal, or if that's something we discuss down the road, but maybe just discuss how that can happen. It was a little upsetting to see the community side coming on strong the past two years, three years, and seeing the block party, the kickoff to school block party not having schools there. So, I don't know if it's something we want to put in goals or something we can revisit later on, but maybe something to do, I mean, I don't know if it would fall under attendance aspect of it, but like definitely a community engagement, like the facilitator, or, you know, something to that aspect.
And that actually also fits into individual goals, right, as well as Ms., you know, Cindy's goals, Ms. Coogan's goals, in regards to what we want to see for us as a district. I agree, I was there, it was disappointing, right? Timing is an issue, right? Everybody, this, if anything, this, I'm not going to make an excuse, but this is a year that principals have been working nonstop to-
Yeah, yeah, and that's definitely understandable.
Support their buildings and hire.
Yep.
So, but I will add that in there. Thank you.
Anything further before this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
So, move.
Second.
A motion, second, step, before roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
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 Yes.